Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll call the Missoula City Council Meeting of August 28th, 2017 to order. If you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Lord God, who stands one nation under God, in whose soul the living is.
And please let the record note that with the exception of Mr. Hess, all council members are present this evening. We have minutes from the meeting of August 21st. Without objection, I'll be approved. Seeing none, we'll move on to our schedule of committee meetings for a couple of weeks. Ms. Raybine?
Yes, for those in the viewing audience this evening and at home, this is our last meeting of August, and we will not be meeting the first Monday in August or in September because, of course, it's Labor Day and we want everybody to have a safe and happy weekend. With that said, we have a couple of weeks worth of committee meetings that we're setting up tonight. Public Works is going to start off on the 30th of August at 1:00 in the afternoon and go till 2:00. Landy Sumplining will follow that from 2:05 to 2:55. Administration Finance Committee meets on this coming Wednesday from 3:00 to 3:05. Real short one there. And the Budget Committee will round out the day Wednesday from 3:10 until 3:20. And then the following week, on the 6th of September, Public Safety and Health will meet from 10:00 in the morning until 11:00. And the Public Works Committee meets from 11:05 to 11:25. And all of those meetings are being held right here in City Council chambers.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Any changes to the committee's schedule? Seeing none, we'll move on to the public comment portion of our agenda. This is your opportunity to comment on items not elsewhere on the agenda this evening.
Jesse Ramos, 425 Whittaker Drive, City Council Candidate Ward 4. I just have a question about an issue that I'm sure you're all sick and tired of hearing about, but it's about the Mountain Water Company. And unfortunately, I'm in Financial Services and I evaluate PE ratios for a living, and I can't help but still notice that the math just doesn't math out with Mountain Water. Again, what's done is done. We own the water company. I think that there are some good benefits to that. But I just have a few questions about the underlying finances of the takeover. For one, a defined benefit pension plan, which for the folks at home, they might not know, it's guaranteed income for life. It's just like Social Security. That check comes to the person's door every single day, every single month until they pass away. And as you all know, people are living longer and longer lives, and this has bankrupt cities, counties, and municipalities all across the country. And I'm just wondering, is the city of Missoula on the hook for all of those employees of Mountain Waters to find benefit pension plans? And are we still going to be offering defined benefit pension plans in the future? Because, again, as we've talked about, this has bankrupt Detroit. It's bankrupt different cities in Illinois. And I'm just wondering if this has been accounted for, and maybe this is something that Mr. Bickel and I could have a conversation about in private. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Any other general public comments this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Items on that consent agenda were approved unanimously in City Council Standing Committees. We save a little time on Mondays by considering these items all together. And Ms. Raybine will read the list of consent agenda items allowed, so folks in the audience and those at home will know what we're considering. And we'll hear from the audience before we vote. Ms. Raybine?
Thank you. Tonight's consent agenda has seven items, and as always, the first is to approve claims, which are the city's accounts payable. And this week, they're in the amount of $837,887.02 for checks that are dated tomorrow, August 29th. The second item is a resolution that levies taxes on the lots, pieces, and parcels of land that are located in the Downtown Business Improvement District for fiscal year 2018 in accordance with state statute. That's 7-12-1132. And number three, turn the page, is to adopt a resolution levying assessments on the hotels that are located within the city of Missoula's Tourism Business Improvement District for fiscal year 2018. Each of those hotels charges $2 per occupied room night, and that's in accordance also with statute 7-12-1132. Number four is to appoint Gwen Langford Spencer as a regular member of the Energy and Conservation Team for a term that begins August 1st, 2017, and ends July 31st, 2020. Number five is to approve a public facility encroachment license to the Missoula County Public Schools for installation and maintenance of a fiber optic line on the Madison Street Underbridge for an initial term of 20 years, with the option to renew the lease twice for 10-year, twice for 10-year term increments. That was hard to say. And number six is a two-parter. The first part is to reject the bids for City Project PR-17-06KPP. In English, that is the Kiwanis Park Shelter Project. And we're rejecting the competitive sealed proposal that we received on that project. The second part is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the National Joint Powers Alliance Polygon Order Form with Place, Base, and Designs Incorporated in the amount of $28,599.09 to procure a prefabricated picnic shelter for Kiwanis Park. And finally, number seven is to confirm the mayor's appointment of James Sage as alternate to the city's Board of Adjustment for a term that commences immediately and expires on June 30th of 2020.
And are there questions or comments from council members this evening? Anyone in the audience care to comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll roll call vote.
On the consent agenda items 1 through 7, Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Bentley. Bentley votes yes. Kears. Kears votes yes. DeBary. DeBary votes yes. Hedall. Hedall votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Marler. Marler votes yes. Swainy. Swainy votes yes. Von Losberg. Von Losberg votes yes. West. West votes yes. And Wilkins. Wilkins votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? That is 11 ayes and 1 abson.
And the consent agenda is approved. We'll move on to comments from city staff, agencies, boards, commissions, authorities, and the community forum. And we do have a Neighborhood Council Meeting report this evening from Miller Creek. Mr. Walton?
I'm Jack Walton. I live at 5050 Jeff Drive, and I'm here to make the Miller Creek Neighborhood Council Report, which was held last Tuesday, the 22nd of August. And Mr. Mayor, council members, and members of the public, I'd like to report that we had 90 members in attendance from Miller Creek Neighborhood area. And we had a barbecue, pulled pork, and things like that. And we kicked off our meeting with a report from Jane Kelly about neighborhood councils and the bylaws and stuff like that. Then the item on our agenda was chipseating and striping on Linda Vista Boulevard. Kevin Slovarp, city engineer, and Ben Wise was there to talk about that. And it was very lively discussion, and we had a lot of people that were pretty vocal about the Lower Linda Vista and the bike lanes and things like that. And in July 12th, there was a public meeting, and then there was a questionnaire online, and people responded to that. There were three alternatives presented about bike lanes. And from the questionnaire, right now, there's about 80% in favor of alternative one, which is just charrels and no designated bike lanes. And so there was further discussion at our meeting the other night about that. Like I said, it was very lively and vocal. And during that, they asked people to write down comments and put a sticky note on their alternative that they preferred. And again, it was option 1. And so the neighbor on Lower Linda Vista really would like the city to issue a waiver to the bike lane policy. So almost everyone at the meeting voted for option 1. Then there was an update on the future about Shaver Drive when it gets extended down to Lower Miller Creek, and that there'll be a roundabout with Shaver Drive and Lower Miller Creek when that portion of the supplemental agreements and development occurs. Aaron Edge, Rockies Plain Representative and a member of the Montana Fish and Game, came and talked to us about the bear buffer zone. Part of Miller Creek is in the bear buffer zone. And they explained to us about how bears and mountain lions are moving through the area. There's a lot of draws and coolies, and they're right now down around the river. Choke cherries and things like that are ripening up. And then Sue Daniel, the principal at Cold Spring School, talked about the new school that's going in. Our meeting was held at Maloney Ranch Park, and so we could look across, and it was kind of a perfect show and tell, because you could see things under construction. And Mark Thane was there also to represent the Missoula County Public Schools. And they said that they expect the school to be completed about this time next year. We had Ethan Smith with the Police Department came and talked about Neighborhood Watch and explained what Neighborhood Watch is, and asked if there was anyone volunteering for being a block captain and things like that. That kind of got sidetracked a little bit. Some people wondered why there weren't more stop signs up in that Linda Vista neighborhood. We have a lot of streets that are narrower, and we don't have stop signs. And they asked about speed limit signs, and want to report today that there was a 25 mile an hour speed limit sign put on Jeff Drive. And then we had a Jeffrey Park update. We were looking for someone from the Parks Department to come, but they weren't able to make that. But we did have handouts, talked about Jeffrey Park and phases that were going on there. I know last Wednesday, after our meeting on Tuesday night, Wednesday, they'd started planting trees in Jeffrey Park. The topsoil's in and sprinkler system, so that's moving right along. And then we had elections of leadership members. We had another individual volunteer, so we're a full member, a total of seven. And then we had question and answers by the City Council, and Annalise Hidalva's there. And she only had a couple of questions to answer. And there was an individual very interested about why there's no bus service up in the Linda Vista and on Miller Creek. And so I know there are several people interested in mountain lion having a bus service up in that area. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walton. And we also have a community forum report this evening. Mr.
Hello, thank you. As you said, my name is Kirk Richardson from Two Rivers Neighborhood Council. We had a meeting last Thursday, August 24th, with two presentations, one from Jen McBride, who spoke about the Missoula Conservation District, and one from Charmelle Owens, who gave a presentation on co-compliance. And I just have a few brief items to mention, summaries of what's going on in the neighborhoods. People in Miller Creek neighborhood have been expressing their concerns about the bike lane stripping on Linda Vista, and they have also discussed the future roundabout at Shaver Drive. Captain John Mullen is moving forward with putting in a playground at 44 Ranch Park. They received a generous donation of playground equipment valued at $40,000 from Spectrum Aquatics, and the neighborhood is working to get funding and support for additional equipment. The University District Neighborhood Council is currently working on future improvements to Jeanette Rankin Park. And after working with the Rose Park Neighborhood Council and other St. Joseph's Schools, playground is now open to the public from dawn until dusk. And at the upcoming Riverfront General Meeting on September 20th at the Silver Park Pavilion, the Neighborhood Council will be hearing about and commenting on plans for California Street improvements. They'll also be hearing about the long-term plans for the Solnoe District. And lastly, Franklin to the Fourth and South Gate Triangle, Neighborhood Councils have assisted with setting priorities when developing the new Montana Rail Link Park. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We will move on then to special presentations. We do have a proclamation this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, whereas author Norman McLean was raised in Missoula, Montana, the son of the Reverend John Norman McLean, a local Presbyterian minister. And whereas Norman McLean translated his Missoula experiences into the unforgettable novella, A River Runs Through It, which was published to widespread acclaim and was nominated in 1977 for a Pulitzer Prize. And whereas McLean's A River Run Through was adapted into a motion picture in 1992 by Robert Redford, and the book and the movie have contributed greatly to tourism and notoriety for Missoula, Montana. And whereas McLean wrote very accurately, "The world is full of bastards, the number increasing greatly the further you get from Missoula, Montana." Now therefore, I, John Ingham, Mayor of the City of Missoula and the State of Montana, hereby recognize the 10th day of September 2017 as Norman McLean Day. And there will be some festivities associated with that event. We'll move on to the public hearing portion of our agenda. State law and our own council rules set guidelines for inviting community comment on a variety of issues. And following the staff report on each of these, council and I will invite comment. Council typically votes on the same evening as the public hearing unless one council member elects to return that item to committee for further consideration. Our first public hearing this evening is on a resolution setting the method of assessment and levying assessments for Park District Number 1 as approved in the fiscal year 2018 budget. Ms. Raybine will provide our staff report. She will also provide a report on the resolution setting the method of assessment for levying assessments for Road District Number 1. And then she'll talk about some street lighting districts before it's all over.
Okay. I didn't bring my notes up for street lighting, because I need to do the vote on this one first. So I'm Marty Raybine. I'm your Legislative Services Director and City Clerk, and I'm here to talk to you about the Park and Road Districts. Now, as you know, the Park and Road Districts in Missoula cover the entire city limits and all parcels that have been annexed to the city since the districts were first created. The City Council conducted a public hearing on the work plan and the budget for both of the districts and approved them on July 24th. The final budget for the Park District was set at $1,591,562. And the final budget for the Road District was set at $2,115,064. The State of Montana Department of Revenue has transmitted their taxable values, and this morning, the gal who calculates these assessments on a per parcel basis finished up the work. So attached to your agenda this evening are the assessments for each of the individual properties in both of these districts. And city staff are recommending adoption of the resolution and levying assessments. The total amounts that I read are divided up and assessed to each parcel. It's based on the portion of the taxable value that that parcel's taxable value bears to the whole valuation of the city, if that makes sense. And this is the same method that's been used ever since the district was established. I'm here to answer any of your questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. With that, I will open the public hearing. Anyone care to comment on these assessments? Ms. Van Fossen?
Good evening, Jane Van Fossen. I'm a resident of Ward 1 and a property taxpayer there. I rise to comment about the resolution that you all are going to vote on tonight concerning the Park District. For taxpayers, this is one of the special assessments that appears on our tax bills in the lower half of the tax bill. The upper half includes the general taxes, but special assessments are there in the bottom half of your tax bill. And I know that many of you are property taxpayers. At any rate, I wanted to point out that since 2010, when this district was created, it has grown by 750%. When I first started paying taxes in this district, I paid $6. Last year, I paid $45. So it's an exploding special district. That's the first part of what I wanted to tell you with my three minutes. The second part of what I wanted to tell you is that this $1.4 million that you're about to levy on taxpayers of Missoula, $200,000 of that is going for debt service. And I would really appreciate if you could clarify which bonds, special assessment funds are being used to pay for. The second point that I have is that, as I tracked all the Budget Committee presentations that you all have gone through so heroically over the last three months or so, when Lee Griffin gave you this presentation initially on July 24th, she gave it to the entire City Council. And then it was updated a couple of weeks later, a week later, by Mr. Bickel once he got the certified tax bills. These special districts were talked about in terms of mill levies. Okay? We were told that the mill levy for fiscal 18 would be 13.07 mills. But as I read this resolution, there's no mention anywhere of mill levy in terms of specific numbers. It talks about the gross $1.4 million, but it doesn't say what individual taxpayers will see on their tax bills in terms of amounts. And this has been a problem in past years, and I think it will be a problem you may be hearing more about as time goes on. I don't understand why the resolution doesn't specify the mill levy. So it appears that all the presentations you got as members of the Budget Committee were couched in mill levy terms, but when the resolution comes to avoid vote, you're being asked to vote for gross numbers. I think that's a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Van Fossen. Mr. Ramos?
Jesse Ramos, again, 425 Whittaker Drive. This might sound a little bit repetitive after Ms. Van Fossen's presentation, but I was also curious why the mill levies don't appear in the resolution for the Park Districts. And I just wanted to know if you guys minded explaining to the citizens, just for the sake of accountability, why the calculations on their individual tax bills never math out when they're paired with the mill levies provided for the special districts? I think that that's something I've heard the most on the campaign trail, is what is a special district, and why does it not match my tax bill? And why do the mill levies promised not reflect on the tax bill when they're actually charged for the bill? So thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right, with that, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council? Mr. Wilkins?
I would like to know the answer to the mill levy.
Mr. Bickel?
If somebody could do that.
Dale Bickel, Chief Administrative Officer. During the budget process, we calculate the citywide Parks District and the citywide Road District as part of the total budget package. And we talk about it in terms of mills for an apples-to-apples comparison. And in fact, the basis for assessing the Park District and the Road District is on taxable value, and so you calculate it as if you were applying mills. However, because it's a special district, it's not technically a property tax. It's an assessment. And so by statute, it's really, these are special assessments, and so the mill levy doesn't technically apply. So that's why that language isn't shown in the resolutions.
Further questions? Mr. Von Losberg?
Thanks. I was going to ask Mr. Bickel about that, but I was wondering if he could also explain. I believe there's a question about the debt service amount. I think it was 200,000.
Mr. Bickel?
The Parks District in particular has debt service that would be related to our capital improvement program and the financing underlying the equipment in those particular areas. So when Parks gets new equipment, just like, you know, new mowers or whatever equipment, they go into our lease program, and those are paid off over time. And so various funds pay their share of those debt service items. So Road District has some debt service. General Fund has debt service, and it's all part of that program.
Marty, I was looking at the resolution or the recommended motions, and I feel like they were less than the amounts that you read. And with number two, I thought you said 2 million something, something, and this shows as 1,900,000. Is there, which one is correct?
You have eagle eyes. You've spotted, we got updated numbers from the Finance Office, and we corrected it in the resolution, but I'm afraid that we did miss it on the agenda this evening. So the correct numbers, hang on, are the ones that I read in my testimony. So the Park District is $1,591,562. And the Road District is $2,115,064. And as I also stated in my testimony this evening, there's an attachment that is added to your documents this evening. Lady just finished apportioning those amounts among all of the properties that are in these districts. And so each individual property owner's amounts are included before you this evening. The State of Montana delivers those taxable values in whole to the city the first Monday in August, and then somebody has to go through on staff and calculate all of the assessments for the individual parcels. She just finished that work this morning. Thanks.
Further questions? Ms. Kears?
So during the committee meeting on this item, on July 26th, we discussed numbers that were lower than we have today, but were higher than when we had seen the initial presentations on these respective districts. On the 26th of July, we talked about how these numbers collectively between the two districts were more than $100,000 increased between our first review. And now I think that will have increased more than 200,000. And I'm wondering if anyone present can comment on the changes to the district budgets from our initial review.
Mr. Bickel?
So some of the changes would be essentially, as we get through the budget process and refine all our numbers, we allocate certain costs relative to those districts, such as the Parks District's portion of the salary increase and the Road District's portion. And we try to maximize eligibility related to those districts, because it helps us manage our mill levy cap and those type of items. So things like the community service specialists that were funded, you know, council approved those positions. But what this reflects is a portion of those, based on the expected time spent on parks and trails, would be funded through the Parks District. And so in total, for the related to the budget, those expenditures would be the same. It's just the allocation between the General Fund and the Road District and Park District.
Ms. Kears?
So then, is the Park District work plan attached inside? Well, I guess that's my whole question. Is the work plan attached? Because I don't think I see it. And what I'm wondering is, has there been a new work plan created since these new figures have been added?
Ms. Raybine?
I'm sorry. I was out the entire month of July, and these answers to these questions I don't have because my mother passed away.
The first question was whether the work plan is linked. Is it?
I'm not sure. I'm looking.
Okay. With regard to the second question, the work plan would always reflect these allocations as a function of the budget. So unless I'm wrong, Mr. Bickel, they should be the same?
Well, that's my belief as well. However, I don't know the answer to the question if the specific work plan was updated related to that language or not. You know, both the Road District and Parks Districts have work plans, and I don't know that the, and maybe it's part of the original boilerplate related to it. know that the -- and maybe it's part of the original boilerplate related to it, boilerplate language, but I'm not sure if the work plan is updated or if that's necessary. I'd have to check into that.
Okay. Further questions? All right. Ms. Marler. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Kears. This lives in A&amp;F. Okay.
Okay. I move we adopt a resolution levying and assessing the lots and parcels within the City of Missoula Park District Number One in the amount of $1,591,562 for the costs associated with providing certain maintenance, purchasing, and improvement services in fiscal year 2018 for city-owned facilities, land, and equipment under the responsibility and care of the City of Missoula Parks and Recreation Department, providing for a method of assessments and providing for other matters properly relating thereto. Would you like me to read the other? We vote separately.
Yes, please.
The other motion is to -- I move we adopt a resolution of the City of -- excuse me. I move we adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Missoula, Montana, levying and assessing the lots and parcels within the City of Missoula Road District Number One in the amount of $2,115,064 for the costs associated with providing certain maintenance, purchasing, and improvement services in fiscal year 2018 for city-owned facilities, land, and equipment under the responsibility and care of the City of Missoula Public Works Department's Street Division, Central Services Vehicle Maintenance Division, and Development Services Engineering Division, providing for a method of assessments and providing for other matters properly relating thereto.
Those motions are in orders of discussion on the motions. Ms. Bentley?
This is following up on what Michelle was getting -- Ms. Kears was getting at earlier. I think the work plan is for the Parks Department, but this increase, the work plan would be in the Police Department work plan, but it's getting charged to Parks because they're policing the parks. Does that make sense? Is that right? I guess I'm speculating. That's why it's not in there. Because the work plan you're asking about is a Parks Department work plan, but we're charging police to the Parks Department, correct? To the Parks District because they're policing the trails. Is that right, Dale?
Mr. Bickel?
Well, that's correct, is that, you know, the work plan for the Parks District is put together by Parks staff. Though, I guess the question that Michelle is asking, and I am following up on, is whether the work plan should reflect all the costs related in the Parks District despite which department those are being housed in. And so I will find that out and just determine if we need to make changes to that.
Further discussion? Ms. Armstrong?
So I think part of our confusion is during the budget season, when we're looking at things, we understand what's in the General Fund, and we understand what gets charged to what districts, but we don't necessarily get told what portions of those are charged to an SID and are going to be a separate on top of charge for taxpayers, and that would be helpful for next season, to know that. The question I had about the Road District is, how much of that could be offset with the new fuel tax influx that we're going to have this year?
So the fuel tax is specifically designed to cover projects and contracting, so it likely would not be offset. This is work we'll do outside of that CIP.
I don't remember it that way. Dale, can you, on the Road District? I think it could be used to offset this. Could it not?
So I guess I'll do -- first, let me clarify one thing, that the Road District and Park District assessments that we talked about were always talked about in the context of that entire budget. So when we showed the budget and the effect on the particular taxpayer, we included the Road District and Park District. Those weren't additional ones that we weren't talking about. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear. The way that the gas tax bill was passed is that we are allowed to apply for eligible projects, and we don't -- I mean, there's a carve-out for the City of Missoula based on the allocation that was in the legislation, but we're required to bring a project. And it has to be -- and that project has to be bid out to a contractor. So to be able to -- so if we wanted to essentially supplant Road District operations, we would have to pick a piece of -- pick a project out that the Road Department may work on, and then actually take that out and bid that. And that's exactly what we're doing for this year through, call that FY -- the FY '18 gas tax project that we talked about during our CIP process, was the South Avenue Phase One project. And that was originally work going to be -- that was going to be done in -- a lot of the work was going to be done in-house with R1 Road crews. With this gas tax allocation, we're able to bid that project out, and then we can focus our crews on maintenance.
Further discussion? Ms. Kears?
I wanted to follow up on Ms. Bentley's comment and then make one more comment. The Park District and the Road District must have work plans. It's a function of their existence. And so it wasn't a comment around the Parks Department's work plan. It was specific to this funding mechanism. And I'm not trying to be difficult. I just wrote in my notes from the July 26th Admin and Finance Committee meeting that there was an increase in both districts, and we would discuss why there was an increase during this public hearing. And so I wish that we had done that. That's the end of my commentary.
Further discussion? Mr. Wilkins?
So I remember when these things first started. I think Marilyn and I are the only ones here that does remember that, and the mayor. They were touted as special districts, that we could get more special things done. Then all of a sudden, everything that was in the regular budget got used for something else. And pretty soon, these special districts were what funded the Street Department and the Parks Department. And at the time, we were told that only the City Council could raise this, and I guess that's kind of true. But then when you get everybody bringing in their work plan, which we did not see, and I think we should see that before we vote, because that was part of the whole plan, that they had to have a work plan in each one of them. And look at how it's grew since then. Nobody thought it would grow that big. And it just seems to be growing and growing. So the biggest problem was, I'd love to vote no on it, but then you're screwing around with the city, the Street Department not being able to do what they need to do, and having the funds, and the same with the Park Department. So I guess you're kind of in a dilemma, so I feel like my hands are tied behind my back and almost have to say yes on this, because it would hurt us too bad if we didn't pass it. But I would like to see a worst saying on this, both of them.
And I'll just remind council members that as a function of your budget process, the budget that you all approved unanimously, as I recall, you saw work plans as a function of that budget, and you saw these numbers, and you saw what was going to be done with these funds. Ms. Marler?
I concur that John Wilkins and I were both on council when this started. We're the old timers now on City Council. I had a couple of comments. I hear the frustration from constituents about property taxes go up, and this one's not technically a tax, but yet it is a -- it's basically a tax, although it's not a tax. In the years since we've had the Road District, you know, road materials and labor and everything has continued to get more expensive, and we discussed on City Council trying to have a Missoula County local option gas tax, and because the commissioners needed to get on board with that, and they did not get on board with that at all, that option, we didn't get any kind of local gas tax. And so that just left us with our one revenue source, which is taxes, and not -- and things that are almost taxes. We have, you know, there's going to be an increase at the state level for gas tax, and we'll see what happens over time. I still think that we should have a two-cent gas tax in Missoula. I hope that that happens. With the Park Districts, I remember sometimes the budget years blur together, but I think it was last summer, that in last summer's budget season, when we were talking about increased needs for park maintenance as a function of the Fort Missoula Regional Park passing. That thing is huge. If you guys haven't gone out to look at the Fort Missoula Regional Park, it's really big. And I think in Missoula, we often, you know, get it, we're very generous, and we get excited for big things, and then it's surprising when we have to -- that there's ongoing maintenance for those things. But that Regional Park is a beautiful asset, and we have to take care of it. Someone can correct me if my memory is wrong on part of why the park budget, the park assessment budget, got so big. I personally did not vote for the Regional Park bond, but I think two out of three Missoulians did. It passed overwhelmingly, and since I've -- since that happened, I've worked to implement that vote. The people wanted it, and we have to do it and take care of it. People want to invest in Missoula. I want to invest in Missoula. And I think that these, when we have these conversations, I just keep coming back to the same conclusion, that as long as we have only one method to raise revenue, it's just going to keep hurting property owners. We need some other ways of raising revenue. That's what it comes down to. So I'll be voting for this. I want to thank staff for putting it together. And all my other questions got asked during the question portion.
Mr. Von Losberg?
Thanks. I just wanted to follow up a little bit on Marilyn's comments about the Park District. She's remembering that correctly. One of the other things, this kind of goes to Mr. Wilkins's comments about special things happening within the district, is in, not in this budget cycle, but in the two preceding that, we allocated some money for urban forestry work that hadn't been initially allocated in the baseline budget. Frankly, there was a lot more that you could make a really cogent argument for supporting, and we did a small fraction of that initially in bringing on urban forestry staff, and then we upped them the next budget year after that to a longer timeframe, and I believe there was some equipment in there as well. And we've seen some results from that work addressing an issue that hasn't been nearly as critical an issue it is for the community as it has become in the last few years. So that's just another example of what we've done in the Parks District, and I would argue that we've done it in an incredibly restrained way. And in fact, this year, despite there being requests to make some additions there again, we elected not to relative to the total tax package. So I just thought that's some additional context. I will be supporting the motions. And I, lastly, just wanted to underscore, and I think someone else mentioned this, but repeat that we did absolutely look at the Road District and Parks District, as well as with the General Fund altogether, all throughout the budgeting cycle. There was no mystery about the dollars and the mills that we were looking at all through that process. And on the particular topic of the two community service specialists, makes absolute sense. They are going to spend a significant portion of their time on the trails and in the parks. This is part of what we discussed over the course of two budget years, and if it's -- and if a portion of their salary is reflected in the Parks District, that's entirely sensible and appropriate.
Mr. DeBary?
So as Ms. Kears had mentioned, and because the numbers are different between what's in the resolution and the motions on the agenda, I think it's only reasonable that we get some updated breakdowns of how the -- how those different line items are parsed out. But I guess I'll go back to the point that I made during the budgeting vote, and that is to try to put this in context of the value you get for the money you spend on this. And I think the broader issue here is, you know, are we getting reasonable value for the amount that's being levied for both the Parks and the Roads District? And I would argue that we do. And to Mr. Ramos's point, another question, a bigger question is, you know, is the amount of money that's being levied across the city being apportioned properly? And is there transparency with that? And I would argue that the answer to that is yes as well. So I'm going to go ahead and support the motion.
Ms. Kears?
I just wanted to mention that we passed the budget unanimously two days prior to this Admin and Finance Committee meeting I keep talking about. And perhaps Mr. DeBary is speaking more eloquently than me, like usual, but I do think that it would be reasonable to get an update on where those expenses lie in a budget. But I also feel like Mr. Wilkins, and that we need to approve these and move forward. And I also have faith in this city. So what I'm going to do is also take some responsibility as the Chair of A&amp;F. You know, I didn't raise these questions prior to the meeting, and I'm sorry for that. I thought that it was inherent at the meeting that we had, but it wasn't. So I will ask that they come back to committee with the new budgets and review those there. Thanks.
Mr. Wilkins?
So I did know that we passed the budget and this stuff was all in the budget. I did know that. And Brian, I think we increased to get the extra things, we increased the money. So I guess what I want to say is, you know, this is hard for, I know, some of the -- our older citizens to swallow, because they're on a fixed income, and things are starting to get really tight for them. I guess the other thing, you know, just think of these as a fee, and quit thinking of them as a tax, and maybe that'll make you happier. It won't me, but it might make some people.
Further discussion on the motions? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing. Whoever will call a vote?
On the Park and Road District resolutions, let's start roll with Bentley. Bentley votes yes. DeBary. DeBary votes yes. Heddle. Heddle votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Marler. Marler votes yes. Swainy. Swainy votes yes. Von Losberg. Von Losberg votes yes. West. West votes yes. Wilkins. Wilkins votes yes. And Armstrong. I'm sorry. Kears. Kears votes yes, and Armstrong votes yes. That means we have 11 ayes and one absent.
And the motions are approved. We'll have a public hearing on the resolution levying assessments for street lighting districts for fiscal year 2018. Ms. Raybine?
So each year, the City of -- sorry, I'm Marty Raybine. I'm your city clerk. Each year, the City considers levies for -- levies for -- to assess taxes to pay for street lighting in the City of Missoula. As a general benefit of lighting, the General Fund of the City of Missoula pays 10% of the bill, and then the remaining amounts in each special lighting district that have been created. I think the first one, I want to say, was created in like 1920s, somewhere around there, and our last one was created shortly after I came to work for the city, around 25 years ago. But at any rate, we have these lighting districts, and so we assess the actual costs that we experience in a year from Northwestern Energy. And then, under the law, the council's supposed to try to estimate what next year's costs are going to be. We're aware of a rate increase that was passed by the Public Service Commission, and so pass-through of that rate increase, it's a 5.8% increase from Northwestern Energy for the city's lighting districts. So we, last year, did not -- our estimate didn't include enough, and so last year's assessments in this -- in these districts was 313,016.77. This year, there's 364,4714. So 364,047.14. I'm here if you have any questions. Well, I wasn't around much in July, so I'll try -- I'll do my best. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. With that, I will open the public hearing on the assessments for the street lighting districts. Anyone here to comment? All right, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council members? Ms. Bentley?
So I just had a question. I heard you say that the rates increased over 5% from Northwestern. Does that increase impact the General Fund in the sense that we have, you know, 5% more higher electricity bills to pay, and so that we're also passing on that cost or absorbing it in our budget? Dale? Dale?
So in the baseline budget for the, for city operations, yeah, we, that is included in our, in our, in our budget, the, our estimates of increased utility costs. Related to the lighting districts, you know, 90% of those costs are passed on to the, to the, the taxpayers that are in the lighting districts, while the, the general fund has to pick up that, of that 10% portion, the, the general fund has to pick up that portion as well.
So is it, is it fair to say that this is one of those things that Marilyn was talking about, how our bills keep getting higher, and we need a way to pay for them?
Yes, in this case, this is a, this is a very good example of that.
Further questions? Seeing none, Ms. Cares?
I move we adopt a resolution of the Missoula City Council, levying and assessing a special assessment and tax on the lots, pieces, and parcels of land situated within special lighting districts of the city of Missoula, Montana, in the amount of 364,047.14, to defray the costs of street lighting in special lighting districts during fiscal year 2018, in accordance with Section 7 hyphen 12 hyphen 4301 through 4354, Montana Code annotated.
And that motion is in order. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing, I'm sorry, Mr. DeBary?
I'll go back to what I mentioned just previously about value, and I frankly think this is a ripoff. So I don't see the value in this. I pay more for my lighting district than I pay for my parks district and just a little bit under the roads district, and, and I don't think we get nearly the value that, that we get for the parks district and the roads district. I don't know how many times over we've paid for the lighting infrastructure. It's terrible lighting, and I, I just really don't think I can support this. As I've mentioned before, I plan to move forward a referral to understand better how we can try to address this issue of lighting in the city, and, and I'm not really willing to continue the status quo at this point.
Mr. Von Laasberg?
Thanks. I'm glad Dr. DeBary brought it up. I'm going to support this because it's a structure that's, exists now, but we do have an example in Ward 1 of a small number of homeowners in an area who have essentially removed themselves from a district, and it's a, it will be a valuable experience. And my understanding, in a very limited sense, is that's been a challenging process bureaucratically with, I think Northwestern to go through. But I, I share Dr. DeBary's concerns about this for constituents in general, and I think that we could learn a lot from that group of homeowners that went through that process of getting out of that district largely, likely for the benefit of the entire community.
Ms. Bentley?
Thanks. This isn't, this isn't the first time this has come up. Actually, there's a study done for the city council, actually, about six years ago by WGM Group. They did a, a study on our lighting infrastructure, which is, of course, owned by Northwestern, and we're a very captive audience. I'm going to support it because I'm not interested in turning the lights out, so to speak, but I think it's a total ripoff also, and I would love to get a better deal.
Mr. Wilkins?
Well, I agree with John on this, and I don't think I'll support it. I remember when I moved here in the early 70s, I almost took the chainsaw out and cut my light pole down when I saw the bill. I still had the chainsaw.
I don't know what to say. So, so I appreciate those comments. As I've mentioned occasionally, Chase Jones is working to understand our street lighting system, and I actually have some high hopes that there might be some things we can do. In the meantime, we're working incrementally, starting with the Missoula Parking Commission, on a performance contract that would not only upgrade that lighting, but save energy over time, and I hope that we can consider a broader program in the relatively near future. Additional discussion?
Ms. Marler?
I do appreciate the discussion, and it has, it has come up in the past, and I, I'm glad that Dr. DeBary is going to make a, a referral to talk about it. I do trust that Chase Jones is working on it, too. I'm going to support the referral tonight, because I feel like if this fails, then like we haven't paid a bill for expenses we've already gotten, or people's lights will just go out, and they, you know, I don't think that's a great thing to do. But I, I hope that we can continue to work towards better option for lighting in the future. Sometimes, sometimes things take a while, and if, I mean, we could just turn off the lights for a few weeks and see what hap, what people say, but I don't think that's the best way to do it. So thanks for the discussion.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing. We'll have a roll call vote.
On the resolution, leaving the assessments in street lighting districts, Cares, Cares votes yes. DeBary, DeBary votes no. Hettall, Hettall votes yes. Jones, Jones votes yes. Marler, Marler votes yes. Swainy, Swainy votes yes. Von Laasberg, Von Laasberg votes yes. West, West votes yes. Wilkins?
No.
Wilkins votes no. Armstrong, Armstrong votes no. And Bentley, Bentley votes yes. Would anyone like to change your vote? Eight ayes, three nays, and one absent.
And the motion is approved. We have no more public hearings this evening. We'll move on to communications from the mayor. Just a couple of things this evening. One is, I just got a notice that the fire, the fires burning around Sealy Lake have gotten suddenly worse, and there's an evacuation order, so keep your friends and neighbors in mind, and if there's anything you can do to help, please do. We've been working with the Red Cross and others, as well as having our first responders assist throughout our communities as we move through this long fire season, and I appreciate all of the work that those folks are doing, and all the work that folks are doing in other jurisdictions. And speaking of first responders, we had a really horrible murder, actually two of them recently, and if you have a chance, when you see police officers, why don't you give them a quick thank you? They see stuff every day that we don't have to, because they do their jobs, and this was tough sledding. We're doing our best to provide some assistance in the wake of the ongoing investigation, but it's tough stuff. So thanks to the cops and the sheriff's department, and folks from Rocky Mountain Labs who came and gave us a hand. It's all very difficult, but I am extraordinarily grateful for the people who are doing that tough work on our behalf. We'll start general comments from council members with Ms. Jones this evening.
I just wanted to build on the theme that Emily brought up last week, that school has started, and Missoula is a town that loves its children, and we also emphasize walking and biking, and guess what? They're all walking and biking, many of them, to school now, so please watch out for these kids as they're walking and biking, and make sure it's safe. They should look both ways each time, but they don't always, so I think drivers need to be aware as everybody settles into their fall routines. Thanks a lot.
As Hettall passes, Ms. Marler?
I have a couple of housekeeping items. Dr. Swainy asked, because of a change in her work plan at UM, to be removed from all city council committees except for committee of the whole and the Public Safety and Health Committee. And I meant to do this one last week, but Ms. Bentley has been the city council liaison to the Missoula Mercantile Working Group. I'm not sure if I have the technical name of that committee right, but I need to, I need to assign Dr. DeBary to be our liaison to that group. And that's the, just for clarification, that's the group, the MRA, working with the developers, and city council liaison, and probably some other great people. So those are, those are my comments. Thank you, Mayor, for your comments about the, the horrible homicide, and I am grateful for our first responders and our police officers. It's just unimaginable.
Ms. Swainy?
I wanted to say welcome back to John Wilkins. It's, he was gone for a while, and we missed his presence. And I also wanted to thank Marilyn for the removal from the committees. I will be teaching this fall, so I appreciate that, and we are welcoming students back onto campus. I wanted to congratulate Gwen Langford Spencer for stepping up to and being appointed to the committee, I want to make sure I say it right, E and C team. And then, lastly, I wanted to comment about not everyone is living longer. When, last year, I returned home for a number of funerals, and the funeral home director commented that of all the funerals he had done that year, the average age for a native person was below 50 years old, and the average age for non-Indians was at least 80 years old. So not everyone is living longer, and one example is, my heart goes out to, and I wish to offer condolences to the family of Savannah Graywind. She was a young woman, native woman, living in Fargo, North Dakota, who was murdered, and it's just awful what, what her family went through. And I know there was, of course, the law enforcement in Fargo that was searching for her, and many people within the community of Fargo, as well as across the state of North Dakota, that were searching for her. And one final thing in that regard is, when I became a council member, I started wearing ribbon skirts to every council meeting and committee meeting in solidarity with a young woman who was working to raise awareness for murdered and missing indigenous women and girls. And today was Wear Red for Savannah. So I just want to acknowledge her and acknowledge all of those sisters that are gone. Thank you. Much gratz.
Ms. Cares?
I wanted to talk about something nationally. Today, President Trump issued an executive order allowing the federal government to give police departments certain military equipment, such as grenade launchers, bayonets, armored vehicles, and more. President Obama had stopped the federal government from providing these weapons and vehicles after the highly militarized violent crackdown by police on protesters in Ferguson. It defies logic to arm the police with weapons of war, but that's precisely what our president has decided to do. As a state, we have worked against this, I think most recently in Bozeman, rejecting an armored vehicle a couple of years ago, and I hope that as a state, we continue to do so more locally. To the people of Ward 6, who are also impacted by the horrible double homicide, I am sorry that such a horrible crime happened to you a block away, a house away from your home. My apologies.
Mr. Wilkins?
So Ruth, I appreciate that you bring these issues to us and, and put it out there to the public. I think it's, should have been done a long time ago. I just want to say, though, coming back to Montana, even though I couldn't see the mountains very good, I knew I was home as soon as I saw them. I really appreciated that, so I, I always do when I go somewhere. And I'd also would like to thank the police department and the sheriff department, and our first responders, the fire department. It isn't that they work for us, it's that we work together, and I think that's important for all of us to remember. And I really appreciate the work they've done, and my feelings are there for you.
Mr. Von Laasberg?
Thanks. Welcome back, John. First day of school, first day of kindergarten for a few of us, well, our kids. I just, our daughter, generally even my daughter, goes to Lowell, just started kindergarten at Lowell today, and we had a great tour of the school a few days ago, and made a point to go stand over in the, part of the original structure, and it's almost inconceivable to think of them doing what they're doing and teaching all those kids in the space that they had before. Very grateful that, to live in a community that rose to the challenge to, to pass those school bonds, they're a big lift for the committee. We talk a lot about taxes and such, and, and I think it's fine to recognize it was a big lift, and I'm glad that the community rose to that challenge, and Austin loved her first day.
Ms. Bentley?
I have to follow up on that and just thank, again, the community. My son, it was my son's first day of kindergarten, my firstborn's first day of kindergarten. It was a big day, and I remember, you know, we had our orientation in the morning, and it was at Paxson, and when we left, I remember sitting in my car this morning, turning it on and thinking, I feel so positive and so good about the place that my son is going to spend the next six years, and it is a beautiful building, it feels very safe, the teachers were so warm, the other parents were lovely. I feel so good about it, and it's such a, it's such a blessing, really, and I have to thank our school board for their, for their leadership and, and the schools. I mean, I'm really impressed with our public schools, and I, you know, Gwen's been saying this for, for years now, but I, I really see what, how lucky we are.
Ms. DeBary?
So I would like to thank all the councilors present and the mayor for signing on to a letter that will be delivered to both senators in support of reinstating funding for the Environmental Protection Agency, specifically the Superfund Program, for which we all benefit.
Ms. West?
So I have a couple of things. I also just want to say how amazing Lowell is, and the community support for the school bonds was just amazing, and my kids are so excited to not eat lunch in a gym. That is all I heard about today, was that they have a separate place to eat, and it's almost like a restaurant. And then, just in line with our proclamation today, the outdoor cinema, which the North Missoula Community Development Corporation puts on, has its last weekend on September 8th and 9th, and September 8th is going to be A River Runs Through It, which I will admit I've never seen, so I plan on attending. And then on the 9th is Pirates of the Caribbean, and that'll be it for our 2017 season, so that's it.
Ms. Armstrong?
So I just, pardon my voice, I just got back from San Antonio. I've been in Texas since the 24th, and there are 15 million people being affected by an unprecedented flood right now. And I'm going to call it a hurricane, because the hurricane wasn't the problem, it's the water, and they are expected to get 25 more inches before Thursday afternoon. So if you have any, any desirability to reach out and help, either through funding or donations or any way you can, please do. It's, it's, it's really bad.
We have no committee reports this evening, nor do we have any new business. Are there any additional items to be referred? Seeing none of those, any miscellaneous communications, petitions, reports, or announcements? Seeing none, as always, I thank you for your service, and we will be adjourned.